We'll call the meeting to order now. First, we'll have the flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Rep., will you lead us in a prayer, please?
Sir.
Right with me. Father, we want to thank you for all of your blessings that you bestow on us each and every day. Thank you for our teachers, students, staff, parents, and our community. We will be experiencing some trying times in the weeks to come. Please help us see that our staff and students are cared for in the most appropriate ways possible. Keep all of our students safe and fed in the event we are not able to open our doors at school. Be with our state, national, and world leaders. They struggle with decisions affecting all of us. Help them make decisions you would approve of. Also be with our men and women of the armed forces as they serve and protect our freedoms. We ask this in your name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Dr. Kincaid.
Here.
Mr. Newsom.
Here.
Mr. Riley.
Here.
Mrs. Tru.
Present.
Mrs. Zimmershey.
At this time, we're going to have the oath of the office for Judy Tru by Gary Bracken,
Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Judy Tru, hereby declare under oath...
I, Judy Tru, hereby declare under oath...
...that I will faithfully perform...
That I will faithfully perform...
...the duties of the member...
The duties of the member...
...of the Board of Education...
Of the Board of Education...
...of the Ponca City Public Schools...
Of the Ponca City Public Schools...
...to the best of my ability...
To the best of my ability...
...and that I will faithfully discharge...
And I will faithfully discharge...
...all duties pertaining to said office...
All duties pertaining to said office...
...and obey the Constitution and laws...
And obey the Constitution and laws...
...of the United States of America and Oklahoma.
Of the United States of America and Oklahoma.
You are hereby sworn in, but there's also a written oath that you will need to sign also.
Okay. I think I did that.
At this time, we're going to have the election of the President, Vice President, Clerk, and Deputy Clerk of the Board. And Shelley's doing that.
Do you want to go ahead and read the commentary?
Do you want me to do that?
Either way.
Go ahead.
Okay. All right. So pursuant to Section 77 of the School Laws of Oklahoma, a Board of Education of each school district shall elect from its membership at the first regular special or emergency meeting following the annual school election and certification of election of new members, a President, a Vice President, each of who shall serve for a term of one year and until a successor is elected and qualified. At this time, the Board must also elect a Clerk and, at its discretion, a Deputy Clerk, either of who shall hold office during the pleasure of the Board and each of who shall receive such compensation for services as the Board may allow. Betty Johnson has been serving as our Clerk of the Board and Kathy Conrad is our Deputy Clerk, and I would like to recommend their continuation.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Second.
You vote on that. Vote now.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Okay. At this time, we need to take a nomination from the Board for President in a second.
I'd propose that Don Newsom become the next President of the Ponca City School Board.
Is there a second, please?
I second it.
All vote again.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmershey.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Okay. So that means at this time, you'll take over, Mr. Newsom, and lead us in the nomination of the Vice President.
How about a motion for a Vice President?
I motion. I propose Mr. Robin Riley for our Vice President.
Do you have a second?
I second it.
Either one.
Cole Rowe.
Mrs. Zimmershey.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Tru.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Yeah. Traded one bald head for another.
We're going to 4.1, Presentation of Employee of the Month and Friends of Education Awards. We've got the Certified Employee of the Month, Amber...
Akins.
Akins?
Mm-hmm.
Special Education Resource Teacher at Union Elementary. Would you come up, please?
Oh, she's here. Yay.
It's a good thing you got to this quickly because she might not make it much longer.
It was good to see her here.
Amber Akins is a Special Education Resource Teacher at Union Elementary, and she is a tremendous asset, not only to us at Union, but to the entire Ponca City School District. She's a vital member of our intervention team. She works diligently to brainstorm and provide suggestions for behavioral and instructional intervention strategies for every student, not just those that she serves. She goes above and beyond by creating schedules, behavior charts, and other supplemental materials for teachers to provide them support in order to better reach students who are struggling in the general education classroom. Amber has been described as flexible, kind, and willing to help in any way she can. She works collaboratively with other special education teachers in her building to provide support for other programs, as well as supporting teachers and counselors district-wide with ed plan questions and monitoring paperwork compliance. If you know what I'm talking about, you know that's a big job. Amber has a knack for building meaningful relationships with her students so they know she genuinely cares about them and believes in their abilities. When it comes to IEP meetings, she is always prepared. Her ability to communicate with parents in an effective, informative, and meaningful way is one of her many, many strengths. She is truly an advocate for kids. For all of those reasons and many more, Amber is very worthy of receiving the award for Employee of the Month.
We'll hurry the next two then. Get pictures so she can go on back home. Next one will be Support Employee of the Month, Leanne Allen, District Commerce Clerk.
Leanne Allen is definitely deserving of the Support Employee of the Month Award. Due simply to her "may I help you" attitude. In fact, we jokingly sometimes call her the enabler, and her love of chocolate goes a long way when people happen to show up with a noodle stash for her when they're needing help. She has an in-depth, vast knowledge of the district's purchasing policies and procedures and always goes the extra mile to make sure everything is taken care of in a timely, efficient manner. Her willingness to assist others by explaining and helping them understand not only what they need to do, but also why it needs to be done, does not go unnoticed. She promptly answers questions to assist others and is always willing to seek remedies and apply fixes to employees' and/or vendors' problems. She's always patient and kind, and in fact, her wittiness and sense of humor are refreshing and very much appreciated many times during some of our more stressful days. Leanne has been very instrumental in the implementation of the new purchase requisition and accounts payable components of the new accounting software. During this past year, she's worked diligently with the financial secretaries all throughout the district, helping them transition to the new versions of these programs. I'm sure everyone who works with Leanne will agree, she's very deserving of this award. Ponca City Schools and the District Business Office are very proud to say Leanne Allen is a very integral part of our team.
Good. Next one will be Friend of Education, Dawn Anson, PTA President at Woodlands Elementary.
Woodlands Elementary School is delighted that Dawn Anson is being recognized as the Friend of Education for March 2018. Without question, Mrs. Anson is very deserving of this award. Dawn serves the Woodlands family in many ways. She has been involved with the Woodlands PTA for four years, including the last two as President. She can also be found substituting frequently in Woodlands classrooms. Mrs. Anson is always willing to lend a helping hand and keeps the PTA moving along and on track. She recruits lots of people to help with PTA and has a knack for being able to match people's skills to tasks. She keeps our students' needs first while watching out for our teachers and staff, too. It is impossible to determine where her role as a Woodlands parent ends and her role as PTA President begins. She does so much, and most of the time, she would be involved whether or not she held an elected office. You can see her running PTA meetings, organizing Family Fun Night, working in the AR store, recruiting parents to provide dinner for teachers on parent-teacher conference nights, cheering on our Teacher of the Year at the District Banquet, and on, and on, and on. She does not hesitate to recommend for PTA to become involved in projects if it is going to help our students or staff. She is organized, plans ahead, plays by the rules, and keeps a smile on her face. Thank you, Mrs. Anson, for being a part of the Woodlands family. You make a difference. We are very proud to recognize you as the March 2018 Friend of Education for Ponca City Public Schools.
Pictures. Y'all need to go out front. They're out.
Just outside the door are our award winners, and Chris Adams will meet you out there to take your picture. Thanks for coming. Congratulations.
Next item will be 4.2, the Woodlands Elementary Challenge Students. Come on up.
Student presentations, Woodlands Elementary.
I'll hand that off to Mary. We'll come over here and tell them that... All right, guys, this is Woodlands Challenge. It's a small sample of our 40 students. We meet once a week on Fridays, 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade. We do separate them out. The first person who's going to present is Mary, and guys, if you'll come over here, and Mary can head up there towards where she can speak to everyone.
In Challenge, we have been investigating many different energy transformations. Energy is the capacity or ability to do work. One of our investigations dealt with electrical energy. This is when motion light or heat is produced by an electrical current by connecting the wires from the motor to the 9-volt battery. We cause the electrical energy from the battery to flow through the coil of the wire in the motor. The coil of wire became electromagnetic, and the shaft began to spin.
You guys can hear it. In Challenge, they put a fan or a piece of tape on there to demonstrate the flow of energy. Love the next one? All right. Who had number two on their paper? Oh. You guys go.
We also investigated thermal energy. I am sure Mary noted the battery heating up. Thermal energy is caused by the motion of matter. As the particles of matter absorb energy from their surroundings, a thermometer will measure the energy taken in as a rise in temperature.
To begin our first experiment, everyone needs to put their hands on their face to know how cold they are. Then everyone needs to rub them together five seconds. They can put them back on their face, and now they're warm. And so that is an example of thermal energy transferring. Another example of thermal energy is when a warm animal jumps up onto your lap and some of their heat is transferred to you.
An experiment we liked used a piece of nylon wire. Nylon wire is used by orthodontists to straighten teeth. First, we twist the wire. The thermal energy is transformed into motion as the nylon wire is placed in the hot water, causing it to return to its original shape. Our mouths provide the warmth so the wire can straighten our teeth.
Let's hope the water stayed hot, Natalie. Did it get it? Don't burn your fingers. They can just twist that thing like no other.
Hi, my name is Adeline. Besides thermal energy and electric energy, we have performed investigations demonstrating chemical energy. In the apple battery experiment, we converted chemical energy into electrical energy by using the malic acid in the apple. We pushed the zinc nail and piece of copper into the apple. The metal reacted differently to the acid, creating an imbalance in electrical charge. The further you push the nail and wire into the apple, the greater of the flow of electrons because there is more metal to react with the acid. Next, we discuss the exothermic chemical reactions. That means heat goes out. The old packet is filled with fillings from a hand warmer that have been exposed to oxygen and water vapor in the air for a long time.
Show them that bag that's been exposed.
The fillings are no longer warm. Now, when we activate the packet, oxygen comes into contact with the iron in the presence of water vapor, causing the iron to rust. This chemical change produces heat. Hand warmers use several small pieces of iron rather than one large piece to allow more
Solar energy is utilized with photovoltaic solar panels, creating electricity by converting radiant sunlight into usable electric power. Next, we will demonstrate a radiometer. The clamp light will act as our sunlight. In this experiment, light changes into thermal energy, then into motion energy. The black and white veins are balancing on a needle. The veins turn because the black side absorbs more energy, and when the air molecules hit the black side, they bounce back with more energy than when they hit the white side.
Hold it up to me, Charlie.
Our groups have been working on working to create solar-powered robots. We still don't have ours together correctly, and we will be working to get him moving.
Our sun produces enough energy in one hour to provide the world with enough energy for an entire year.
The last type of energy transformation we will discuss with you tonight is mechanical energy. Mechanical energy is the energy of motion that does the work like when turning a windmill. When wind blows past a turbine, the blades capture the kinetic energy and rotate. This rotation can turn the wheel of a mill to grind flour. It can pump water from a well or rotate an electric generator producing electricity. In building a windmill, we discovered how gear ratios work. The windmill can either light up the bulb or it can charge the battery. The car we created can use the batteries charged from the windmill.
Right now, she's plugging it into the battery source. Now she's just going to light the bulb. Nope, you need to change your gear ratio. Oh, is it lighting up, Paige? Maybe you should engage your blue gears, see if the blue gears will get it. There she is.
Saw it come on.
Oh, something came undone. They were kind of fragile mechanisms to create, but they were able to charge batteries to run their little car, too, so that's kind of neat. Is that the last of yours? You guys have more? Oh, you want to show them how the car runs?
We hope you enjoyed what we have been learning about in Challenge. We look forward to our next big project, building a boat that will transport our team across the swimming pool.
Thank you so much, students. And Ms. Nielsen, thank you for your hard work, too. We appreciate it.
Great job. You'll have to bring the video back when he show you goes in the big boat.
Oh, there you go.
We did it last year at the pontico pool. Amazing.
Good job. Thank you all. We'll give you a second to get going.
Is the redheaded girl behind you?
Thank you for coming. Good job, students.
Good job, some of those words. It's a senior in high school that's in grade school, kids. I couldn't even read them. Good. Our next item was a public comment, and we didn't have anybody sign up for that, so we're going to go on to number seven, superintendent's report.
Okay. A couple of things, major things, that we need to talk about. Something big in the legislative front. In late February, the governor signed House Bill 1020XX into law, and that was the rebalancing bill to rebalance the fiscal year 18 budget from the hole, when our lawmakers failed to come up with revenue to fill the hole. And these cuts came across the board. And to education, the cuts were 16.2 million. 15.35 million went to our state aid, and we were told that it would be about $13 per weighted ADM. And in one of my memos, I likely told you it would be 110,000 to 115,000. Well, on March 7, we received our state aid allocation, and it was down 113,304, so just about right where we predicted it would be. If you'll remember from finance, those who were in finance, prior to this cut, our fund balance was up 475,000 from this time last year. That was prior to this cut. Just in FYI, all POs must be written by March 16, which is this Friday. Does this mean we need to curb our spending? Yes, on wants, but our principals have been directed to let us know if they have a need. We have money for needs for our students. So the cut did affect us, but bad news, good news, we're still up on our fund balance from this time last year. The second thing, which is a critical topic, is the impending teacher walkout slated for April 2. And if you've been keeping up with the news, you know that OEA had a press conference late last week and issued some demands. And these demands include a $10,000 pay raise to teachers over the next three years, with 6,000 being next fiscal year, and then 2,000, and 2,000 equate to the 10,000. A $5,000 pay raise for all school support employees, educational support employees, and I don't think that's laid out on how that will look at this time, 2,500 next year. Is that correct, Zach?
12, 15, the next two years.
Next two years. That will be prorated based on if they're a full-time support and professional or not. And it also asks lawmakers to increase public school funding by 200 million, fine 213 million for state employee pay raises, and 255.9 million in additional health care funding. And from what I understand, OEA is ready to walk on April 2, and there's no negotiating until these bills are not only written, but until they're signed into law by the governor. Our teachers are very frustrated with recent measures that have failed, such as the Step Up Oklahoma Plan. Our enrollment across Oklahoma, and I've talked to you about these statistics before, has increased by 40,000. Our state aid funding is down by 213 million as a state. And our profession has just faced deplorable statistics, some of which are that from 2010 to 2015, more teachers have left the profession than have gotten into the profession. Emergency certificates are up 3,500%. This year alone, the State Department has approved over 1,900 emergency certificates, which means in some cases, our children might not have a highly qualified teacher in the classroom. What's this mean for Ponca City? Currently, we have 15 teachers on an emergency certificate, and we have four long-term subs covering classrooms, so for a total of 19. We've been fortunate in that our emergency-certified teachers were our support professionals who had a degree and had been in the classroom, so our teachers could train them, which has been a positive for us. But each year since five years ago, this number has increased. Currently, we have 12 positions open, and it is early. Our teachers have two weeks within the first Monday of June to resign. We have 12 unfilled positions. I will say, we have three teachers hired in a bank, but they have not been placed anywhere, and I'm concerned that... And I'm concerned that we will be able to fill our positions. It gets increasingly worse each year and our legislators have not given our teachers a reason to stay in Oklahoma. As a matter of fact, since the failure of this Step Up Oklahoma Plan, we have lost three teachers specifically to resignation because they are leaving the state, not Ponca City. They love Ponca City, they love our district, they love our students, but they cannot make ends meet as a teacher in Oklahoma. So, three of our teachers are leaving the state due to the failure of the Step Up Oklahoma Plan. Last year, we lost 11% of our certified staff to something other than retirement or significant other transfer. 11%. We know that the experience of our teachers makes a huge difference for our students. And if we have that much turnover every year, it's detrimental to our students. Last year, we lost 20% of our support professionals to something other than retirement. I'm not sure on the statistics as far as spousal transfer. And I will say this, no one, including our teachers, want this walkout to occur. It will impact every activity, every course, leave, compensation. No one wants it to happen. But our teachers are frustrated, they're not walking out on our children. They love their students and they know that their educational needs are not being met. My own personal opinion, I've been a teacher for a long time, our teachers would not be taking such a drastic measure if they didn't feel desperate. And they are hoping that we do not have, that they do not have to take this move. Without doubt, we are in crisis in education in Oklahoma. But it's very concerning to me that we place our students' education in the middle of an adult dispute. But what I do know is a teacher, a teacher makes the greatest impact on student learning and student achievement. They're competent, they're well-trained. They have been provided professional development, we have some sustainability. They can develop positive relationships with students. And if there's not a change, our teachers aren't going to have that kind of teacher in their classroom, or our students aren't going to have that kind of teacher in their classroom. So I think it's critical that Oklahoma make education a priority or will continue to lose teachers to other states. Zach Murray, our ACT president, tells me that we have about 330 teachers out of 350 who responded to a survey that are ready to walk out on April 2nd. We won't have a choice but to suspend school if that happens because we cannot, we will be debilitated. We can't support and supervise our students. When we have 60 teachers out on leave, we are very vulnerable. We have classes unfilled with substitutes. We can, on average, secure 22 substitutes on any given day. Is that pretty accurate, Mr. Layton? Our teachers are leading this charge. This is not an administrative initiative and this is not a Board of Education initiative. Our teachers are working with community partners because we know that some of our students won't have supervision or nutrition available during this time. And our OEA has actually tentatively scheduled a town hall meeting on March 29th at 6 o'clock at West Middle School to provide resources to our parents and to ask any questions that they may have. We'll keep everyone notified if we need to go forward with that town hall meeting. We absolutely hope that we do not have to. Employees have a lot of questions, as do our parents. I have fielded numerous questions today from both employees and parents. And I am planning on sending a parent, community, employee letter Wednesday of this week. And then, we are working on guidance in the form of frequently asked questions for our employees, which will be posted on our website, on our Facebook page, and sent via email. At this point, we don't know what's going to happen, but the district has to be prudent to prepare. We will react to what the teachers do. But we will not be able to sustain with 330 teachers out. Are those accurate numbers Zach?
330 total staff.
Okay.
Teachers and support, I'm not sure of the breakdown of that, on that number, but 330 total.
Okay. Any questions in regard to that, comments? I know that you will have a lot of questions and we have a lot of things to iron out. The other thing that I want to talk about, do you want to go on, do you want me to go on to 7.2?
Yeah, go ahead.
Is we have to vote tonight to set a special board meeting to sell our Series 3, our next series of bonds, which is our Series 3 bonds. And the amount of those bonds happens to be 9.865 million. And our financial advisor, Stephen McDonald and Associates, has recommended that we do this Thursday at noon. So, why Thursday at noon? Because of the size of our, of this issue, our financial advisors want to schedule this sale when not much is going on on the economic calendar that day. And there happens to be no major announcements that day, so he is recommending April the 3rd at noon. Now, why 9.865 million in the sale of our bonds? We keep our mill levies at 22 mills. And that's how the amount of the sale of the bonds was established. And we need to keep our mills stable so our taxpayers won't feel the burden either way. In addition to that, in conjunction with the sale of the bonds, because of the high dollar amount of the sale, there is a lot of national interest in these bonds. And our financial advisors have recommended that we seek bond counsel service with the Floyd Law Firm, who will be able to furnish full directions as far as state statutes go and also be in compliance with Internal Revenue Code of 1986. So that will be on the agenda for your approval. And then in conjunction with the sale of the bonds, the BOE will be asked to take action on an engagement letter with S&amp;P Global Credit Rating for the 9.865 million. And basically, after they receive relevant information from the district, and I have a conference call with them on Thursday, they will be able to provide an analytic review of our credit rating. And the fact of the matter is, potential bidders want to be assured of our reliability. And this is required for the sale of bonds. So those are a couple of things to consider if you so move to approve the sale of bonds on April 3rd. Okay, that's it for me, Mr. Newsom.
I guess we're gonna have, we're gonna be calling the next item on the phone. Or who's gonna do that, Brett?
Brenda.
She's ready? Okay, we're gonna do a presentation from the Wilson, Dotson &amp; Associates on the audit report.
Hi Pam, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Can you all hear her? Okay, can you hear?
Am I talking loud enough?
Talk a little louder.
Talk a little louder?
Mm-hmm. Okay, was that better, okay. It's better like this, yes, yeah, that's why I thought it was better like that, okay.
Okay, as I'm sure they probably already told, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We didn't say anything.
Oh, okay. I met with the Finance Committee last week and went over the audit report with them. What I'm hearing is an echo, that's what it is, okay. I went over the audit report with them and the few immaterial things we wanted to discuss. And basically, what I told them was, you guys have great checks and balances, which is what we call internal controls. You are in compliance with the State Department of Education's regulations and with the Oklahoma statutes. And you're also in compliance with the federal government's uniform guidance. So, your audit report is reflecting all of that and you're just in a great shape right now.
Do y'all have any questions?
No, we had a really good discussion. Robin had a few questions and we got that ironed out. And I don't have any others, do you Robin?
No.
At that meeting, the ones weren't there unless you guys have some, but the document's pretty thorough that we get each year.
Yeah, the only comment I'd have, it's obviously a compliment to Brenda and staff that year after year, we keep getting excellent audit reports. And trust me, everybody in the state isn't getting good audit reports. So, you know, my compliments to the whole group that works on it.
And that is true. When I say you have good checks and balances, you have policies and procedures in place that other districts wish they had.
And you got that item on here that we talked about on the, with?
Booster clubs?
Yeah, booster stuff.
Yeah.
Okay, good. We'll take care of that whenever comes time to do that, so.
Okay.
That was the main thing, long she had that set up, what we discussed. I don't have anything else, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you Pam, that's all we need, we appreciate it.
Okay, well, you're very welcome, bye-bye.
Good. Let's move on to consent agenda. Like an item to approve the consent agenda. With the commentary, the minutes from the February 12th, 2018, regular meeting and contract agreements under $10,000. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yeah, I move to approve, we talked about all these and had no problem with them in the Finance Committee. So I move to approve 9.1, 2, and 3.
I'll second.
Good, we have a motion by Robin, a second by Judy to approve 9.1 through, 9.1.1 to 2.3. Any other discussion? None, real call please.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item will be, consider and take action on the following district's financial reports. We had a good meeting at that one too.
Yeah, again, we talked about all these in the Finance Committee, so I oughta move that we approve 10.1 in its entirety.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Motion from Robin, a second from Judy on the, if I get my machine to move, 10.1, any other discussion? None, real call.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Next item will be 10.2, consideration and take action on receiving the audit report from Wilson, Dotson &amp; Associates Auditing Firm. Like a motion to approve this item.
I so move.
Second.
Have a motion from Dr. Kincaid and a second from Robin on 10.2, any other discussion? Just other than that, it was a good report. She trained us out on a few things, but we'll probably, hopefully we'll have another good one next year.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye. Motion passed. Next item is 10.3, consider and vote to take action on the resolution determining the maturities and setting the date time placed for the sale of a 9.865, or $9,865,000 general obligating building bonds of the school district.
I'll move that we have a special board meeting on April the 3rd at 12 o'clock noon to approve the sale of these bonds.
Okay, a motion from Robin on 10.3, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from, and what else, any other discussion? If none, real call.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Next item will be 10.4, consideration and approve, consider and approve an agreement for the bond council services for the Floyd Law Firm PC Attorneys at Law. Do I have a motion for 10.4?
I'll make a motion to approve 10.4.
Thank you Judy, Judy approves 10.4, do you have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from either one. Thank you all.
Have you ever had to hire one before?
We have, in the past, when we had.
It's been a while since we did a 9 million at one time. I think there's a, is it 9 at the point, or is it 8 million?
You've had to hire a bond counsel on a couple of occasions and you used to this firm.
It was the same one, what I was thinking, that's what I thought. Okay, any other discussion? Real call.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Next item will be 10.5, consider and take action on engagement letter with S&amp;P Global Ratings to provide credit ratings for the school district. Like a motion to approve the?
I motion it.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Okay Judy, second. Any other discussion? And it's real call.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Motion passed. Next item will be 10.6. Consider and take action on agreeing with Kagan Professional Development for Learning Workshop. We discussed this one, didn't we, a little bit at the?
A whole lot, a little bit.
If I remember right. But had good discussion on it, we'd like a motion to approve this item.
I motion to approve it.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you David. Motion's been made and seconded. Any other questions? Comments? None, real call.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Motion passed, thank you. Next item will be 10.7, motion and vote to convene to an executive session for the following purposes, to discuss possible termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel on the attached detailed personnel report to discuss the employment of executive directors and directors, to discuss negotiations, and to discuss confidential conversations with the board's attorney concerning pending claims and litigation. And we do need to go into executive session. I have a motion for executive session.
I'll so move.
Do I have a second?
Yes.
We have a motion and a second for 10.7. No other discussion, real call.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Mr. Newsom?
Aye. Motion passed. We're in executive session. Let's return to open session. Minutes for the executive session were kept by the board's minutes clerk and will remain confidential. 10.10, consideration to vote, consider and take action on renewal of the following administrative contracts for the 2018-19 school year on our directors. I'd like a motion to approve 10.10.
I so move.
We have a motion? Second for 10.10, any discussion? Real call please.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Next item will be 10.11, consider and take action on the recommendations for termination, reassignment, resignation, and employment of personnel. A motion to approve 10.11.
I'll make a motion to approve 10.11.
Motion by Judy, do you have a second?
I second.
Second, David, for 10.11. Any other discussion? If none, real call.
Mrs. Zimberstein?
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid?
Aye.
Mr. Newsom?
Aye.
Mr. Riley?
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt?
Aye.
Next item is 10.12. Consider and take action on resolutions supporting our public school teachers and encouraging the Oklahoma Legislature to fund reoccurring salary increases for the teachers. Like a motion to approve 10.12?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Do we need to read that resolution?
We can, it's on page 75 of the,
I think for the record, it probably ought to be read.
Sure. Okay, so the resolution states, whereas the Board of Education supports public school teachers and the work that they do educating the children of our school district, whereas the Board of Education understands that Oklahoma-
the Board of Education understands that Oklahoma's public school teachers are frustrated with the lack of pay, and as a result, the state is experiencing an extreme shortage of qualified teachers throughout Oklahoma. Whereas, school districts have increasingly turned to the use of long-term substitute teachers and emergency certified teachers to educate students. Whereas, the low pay provided by the state of Oklahoma for public school teachers has led to students not being able to receive an education from highly qualified and certified teachers. Whereas, the Oklahoma Legislature is the governing body that dictates funding to public school districts. Whereas, the Board of Education supports a salary increase for public school teachers, be it therefore resolved, that the Board of Education hereby encourages the Oklahoma Legislature to find a dedicated source of revenue that can be utilized to fund a much-needed recurring salary increase that will be provided to public school teachers in Oklahoma.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Yeah, I made a motion.
We just need a real call.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
New business, and I think we have some new business, something?
Tomorrow, the district closes on an acquisition of a, of the building that's just east of West Middle School, and in connection there with, the district has an opportunity to sign a waiver and dissolution of restrictive covenants that are on that building. And I have prepared a form that the district can sign to do that, and we really didn't know about it until today. So I would recommend that the board adopt a resolution approving that waiver, so it can be presented at closing tomorrow.
Do we have a motion?
I move.
Do I have a second? We have a motion, a second. Any other discussion? Real call, please.
Mrs. Zimmerstein.
Aye.
Mrs. Truitt.
Aye.
Mr. Riley.
Aye.
Mr. Newsom.
Aye.
Dr. Kincaid.
Aye.
Any other new business?
No.
All right.